Good morning. I would like to call this meeting to order. The Clerk has advised that we do have quorum. Please join me in the National Anthem. Mike Bylee, William Carvell, Bill Graham, Diane Sylvia Green, Scott Lyell, DePaq Ruwewel, and Glaton Ruby. Thank you. We acknowledge the land we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississauga of the Credit, the Onishni-Nobe, the Chipewa, the Hono Shoni, and the Wendat people, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit, and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty 13 with the Mississauga of the Credit. For the benefit of those who are connected to the Internet, the City Clerk has posted all of the agenda materials for today's meeting at toronto.ca/council. This meeting is being held as a hybrid meeting. Members of council, staff, and the public are participating in today's meeting remotely and in person, and the meeting is being streamed live on YouTube. I'd like to welcome the public who are with us here today and who are watching the meeting online. This morning's special meeting of council is for the following purposes: to consider deferred item GL 32.19 from the July 19, 2022 meeting; to consider urgent new business heritage matters; and to introduce and enact general bills and a confirming bill for the special meeting. Members of council, this is a special meeting. Under council procedures, no new business items such as member motions may be introduced. This rule cannot be waived. May I have a motion to confirm the minutes? Moved by councillor Lyne. All those in favor, carry. May I have a motion to introduce a new business from city officials? Moved by councillor Grimes. All those in favor, carry. Are there any declarations of interest at this time? Please indicate the number and the nature of the interests. Remember that you must also file a written declaration of your interest with the city clerk. No? Okay. I would now call for petitions. Are there any petitions at this time? Members, I will now review the order paper. We have one deferred item before us today, item GL 32.19, and seven new business items. I will now go through the items to take member hold, starting with the deferred item. And the Clerk will open the speakers list, CMP, and you can please put your name on the list. When I recognize you, unmute your mic and state the item you wish to hold. Okay. Does anyone want to hold the deferred item down?
Yes, I need to hold that for some motions. Thank you.
Okay, so that was councillor Phillyan. Okay. On the new business, are there any items to be held down?
Madam Speaker, 48.2.
Okay, thank you. I can't see anybody's name, so... Nobody else? Any items they want to hold down? No? Okay. So that's it? You have to be patient, because I don't have the screen in front of me, so I can't see. Members, before we adopt the order paper, we will conduct recorded votes on those items where members have declared an interest. We don't have any interest. All those in favor of adopting the balance of the order paper?
Please, Clerk, I'd like a recorded vote. Councillor Fletcher, a recorded vote, please.
Okay, all those in favor adopting the balance of the order paper and all items not held, recorded vote.
Thank you. Thank you.
Can everybody hear me?
So that's done to ensure that the community members are kept informed of the planned services. We also hired a consultant, Jane Farrow, Department of Words and Deeds Incorporated, to lead the community engagement process for this site. And that was in alignment with the councillor's approved engagement process. So we have done a few community information sessions at this point, and we will be looking to see and identify if there's a need for additional community engagement in the future before opening.
So when it comes to the actual ownership of the property, it's a bit of a messy situation. I understand the city owns the actual land that the hotel is built upon, but it's rented out on a long-term lease, a very long-term lease, to another party who subsequently allowed the hotel to be built and created another lease. On page seven, you say, "The landlord has indicated willingness to sell the property." Well, with all these parties involved in ownership here, who is the landlord? And how could city property be sold unless it's the hotel on top of city lands?
Thank you, councillor, through the chair. This is Alison Felosea, the Director of Transaction Services with Corporate Real Estate. The hotel is located within a larger complex. And in our discussions with the hotel operator, we understand that there is some interest in understanding some long-term opportunities with respect to the hotel, which is part of a larger complex. You are correct in acknowledging that the entire complex is located on city-owned land that is subject to a long-term lease.
So I assume the city will have a right of first refusal to, with any future change of ownership of these lands? Or the use of these lands?
Through the chair, councillor, the relationship and the use of the lands are subject to the terms of the long-term ground lease.
Okay. So when it comes to what we're trying to do now, these are newcomers. This will be inhabited by newcomers, people who have come to this country from foreign countries. And they're seeking refugee status, asylum, some kind of status from the [inaudible]. Is this site exclusive to that?
So councillor, thanks for the question. And through the chair, you know, shelter support and housing, just to respond to your question, we've seen a steady increase of refugees seeking temporary accommodations since September of 2021, primarily driven by, you know, border reopening and the easing of international travel restrictions. So we've actually seen more than 2,200 new refugees that have been admitted into the Toronto shelter system since September of 2021. And that's currently more than 1,800 still in the system. So from August 1st to August 8th of 2022, there were 129 new refugee clients, which is 52%. Actually, 52% are in the base shelter system. And of that, 34% are families.
Thank you. That was your last question? That was your last question? Councillor Fletcher, you have questions?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Speaker. I just wanted to go over some of those questions that were being asked about the consultation and this inference that somehow the city could go out and consult ahead of time before making the decision. And isn't it the case that a number of years ago, the process was changed? So that if there's a city benefit or a location that's determined for some kind of housing, whether it's Housing Now site, whether it's modular, whether it's this type of site, that the city is authorized, staff are authorized to proceed? And then the consultation is about how it will be run, any of the issues, not whether or not it should be there? I'd really like to hear that confirmed because I'm not sure all councillors understand that process. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Fletcher. And it's Justin through the chair. I would say yes, the answer is yes to your question. In April of 2017, council approved a new approach to shelter siting and community engagement. And then in December of 2017, council approved a new emergency shelter development process and site approval model. And that was to complement the other approach. And the goal of the new process was to effectively engage councils, service users and the community while strengthening the city's ability to successfully and quickly secure properties in Toronto's competitive marketplace. So yes, councillor, the answer to your question is yes.
But given that, though, there, I think after a few, I don't want to call it misstarts, but a few hiccups, the conversation with the local councillor and how that will be taken and undertaken, who and how to engage the community, that is actually something that's a pretty important conversation. I didn't hear you read that part. Is that not part of the process?
Yes, and through the chair, councillor, you are correct. That is a part of the process.
Okay, I'd call that a fundamental. Would you call that a fundamental piece of the process? Having given up the ability to say yes or no, at least to be very clear about assisting in placing different types of uses in different communities?
Yes, councillor. And through the chair, yes, the answer to your question is yes.
Also just had one other question about the current hotel and its use. Are there staff in there? Are there unionized employees in that hotel right now?
Thanks, councillor. Through the chair, we understand that there are employees. As a part of the bulk room accommodations agreement that we are seeking authority for, the hotel will continue to operate as a hotel, continuing to perform the key components of hotel business, such as housekeeping and catering. And so we don't anticipate any significant impact to, within the local employment.
Have you, I believe that that's a collective agreement with Unifor. Have there been discussions with the representatives of those workers in that hotel?
Thanks, councillor. Through the chair, we have not directly engaged in any discussions with the union. We are in the process of setting out the terms of our agreement. And in discussions with the hotel owner, we knew that it was critical that the hotel continue to provide key services and employment opportunities, but we have not engaged with the union specifically.
Do you not think that, as it's their workplace, that that would be a wise thing to do as well? Make sure that you're not going to run into picket lines and other kinds of issues associated with this use coming to this site?
Thanks, councillor. Through the chair, because we are really engaging in a service contract, we do not want to overstep any of our boundaries around union relationships.
I see. But council can. You'd agree with me that city council can, correct? If we wish to say that we're not going in there, union busting in this hotel. Council has that authority. I guess I'm going to ask, you probably can't, I'll ask the manager.
I would say I may not be right.
I'll ask the deputy or the city manager on that. That's not our intent. We have an ability to say we need to be sensitive to the current collective agreement.
Through the speaker, I appreciate where you're going with this. We can certainly look at it. I mean, it's not our intent to create any unintended consequences.
It's not your intent, but leaving it entirely up to the owner, your intent, you could actually, if you don't know what they're doing on that site, I think this could get quite rocky. So would you not agree with me that our intention would be to have as smooth a process as possible at this site? Including, when you're talking about consultation, I guess I'm a little surprised to hear that this consultation doesn't include the employees directly. Is that not part of our tenant, our approach?
Our intent is, as I think you state, that we're not trying to create unintended consequences.
I guess I'm asking, would those who work there in a unionized environment not be part of a consultation from the city side?
Nothing precluded.
That was your last question. Thank you. Mayor Torrey, questions?
Well, I just wanted to ask to clarify on some of the questions that councillor Fletcher was asking. I was out at the Delta Hotel, for example, in Scarborough on the week, on the Friday. And there, I explicitly asked about who the people were that were doing a lot of the work that I saw, the housekeeping work and cleaning the hotel and working on the food and so on. I was told it was hotel employees, existing hotel employees whose jobs, in fact, were preserved by this. And so I just wanted to clarify, is that the case with other hotels that we use?
Thanks. Through the chair, yes, that is the case. In many of our hotel agreements, they have been structured in a manner to maintain the, as much employment within the hotel as possible. In our discussions with respect to this contract specifically, there was a request to keep as many services through the hotel to ensure that those positions, those jobs were protected as well.
Thank you. Okay, councillor Phillyan.
Speaker?
Councillor Phillyan.
Speaker?
Yes?
Speaker?
Who's speaking?
It's Mr Thompson here. You may not be able to see me, but I did have a couple of questions.
Okay, sorry, your name's not there, sorry. Councillor Thompson.
No problem.
Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Speaker. Thank you. Through you to staff. So there is a lease of the city-owned lands. What's the term, what's the length of that lease?
Sorry, Deputy Mayor. The term of the ground lease or? My apologies, I missed.
Yes, the ground lease, the ground lease, the ground lease, yes.
If you want to just give me two seconds, councillor, I do not have the.
That's fine, I can go to another question then in the meantime, while you're looking at that. I wanted to ask a question around the MCF as it relates to the property. There's a tax exemption, both municipal taxes and education taxes, is that correct?
Yes, through the chair, Deputy Mayor, there is. The MCF designation exempts the city from paying a portion of the property taxes.
And that's on the hotel property?
Just with respect to the hotel.
Right. And what is that annual tax amount? Do you know?
I may defer to my colleagues and if there is anyone from Revenue Services available. If not, we can take that question away and get it back to you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, Chair, through yourself to the Deputy Mayor, the term of the ground lease expires in 2083.
All right, thank you. Those are the questions. Go ahead, Speaker.
Thank you. Speakers, councillor Phillyan, you held the item down to speak. Councillor Phillyan?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to move the supplementary report along with some additional recommendations. If the clerk can put them up on the screen. And. Sorry. No, we're, I think I'm looking for the supplementary.
We have your motion on the screen.
Okay, okay. So it's a supplementary report with some additional items. I don't see the additional items up there.
Do we have the additional items? Oh, okay, there it is.
Okay. So I'll just, rather than read all these out, I will just say I'm very much in support of this project. It is urgently needed. This is a, objectively speaking, a good location. It's connected to a subway station. It is connected to one of the best library branches in the city. It is connected to Melasman Square. It is connected to Douglas Doh Aquatic Centre. It is a block and a half away from Toronto, from the Keoliv Centre, Meridian Centre, with North York Arts is in. There's all kinds of great opportunities here to do really excellent programming. That doesn't mean there isn't an impact on the community. The major impact is the loss of the only hotel in Willodale. In fact, there isn't a hotel, anything like this one for quite a long distance. So that will certainly be an impact to the local community, to local businesses. So with my motions here, I have been attempting to just create some flexibility, particularly within the food program, so that the vast, vast majority of meals will be provided through the service provider by the Novotel. But to also create opportunities for culturally appropriate food to be brought in by the service provider with, hopefully through local businesses, and the opportunity for residents to have a very small number of meals outside of the hotel, so that you don't end up with a situation where, first of all, the residents are just completely stuck in their very small hotel rooms the whole time and that the local community doesn't get any business at all to offset the loss of the hotel. So staff have been terrific. I have been in conversations with them practically on a daily basis. And they have made time for me even while they're on holidays or should be on holidays. And I think we've come out with a really good result, just clarifying a few things and providing flexibility to the service provider, who I think, if it's who I hope it will be, will be excellent. And I think this really could be, you know, a new model for really how to do this well at a large site. I think long-term, it's better off if, you know, we are able to decentralize a bit. But everyone I've spoken to who's in the business of serving refugees says this is urgently needed at this time and a five-year lease is urgently needed at this time. The, I heard an astonishing statistic last week from a service provider that there are 100 million people displaced worldwide by war and violence and other things. And we're very familiar with what happens in places like Ukraine, the terrible tragedy there, or Afghanistan, because we see it on the nightly news. But there are horrible things happening in far too many places of the world. And people have to flee their homes, their jobs, in some cases leave family members behind seeking safety. So, you know, I couldn't be more supportive of this initiative and very interested in continuing to work with staff and the service provider for the remainder of my time here to try to make sure this gets off to a really successful start. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we have.
Speaker?
Yes?
Speaker?
Councillor Thompson.
It's councillor Thompson here. You obviously can't see me and I'm not connected to be able to let you know that I wish to speak, but I'd like to speak on this.
Councillor Thompson to speak, go ahead.
Sure, thank you. I have a motion. I'd like to have that staff put forward, the motion, please. I'm not able to see it yet. I don't know if you can, Speaker, or others.
Okay. Councillor Thompson, did you receive the response from staff on your motion?
Yes, I responded back. I thought I responded back to them saying, yes, the changes I've made is fine and that they've responded to. I'm just looking at it here. So I'm fine with respect of the changes that I suggested to staff.
Okay. It's my understanding that the staff indicated to you that your motion was not in order, but if you want to introduce it.
I didn't see that, Speaker.
Okay.
Go ahead, please.
So councillor Thompson, why don't we go to the next speaker? And then we'll come back to you?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
Councillor Fletcher to speak.
Thank you. And I don't want to make a big problem, but I do have a motion, Speaker, that I did send to staff, to Marilyn.
Okay, just one sec. Do we have councillor Fletcher's motion?
I think it needs a tiny cleanup.
Okay, just one sec.
Thank you, Speaker. Did you say yes for the tiny cleanup?
Oh, here it is. It's on the screen.
Oh, okay, good. Basically, it's what I was talking about earlier. One is just to ensure that the consultation model that we have going, which is very broad, also include the employees at the hotel. So that would be the bargaining representatives there and that there be this meeting with them, just to look in case there's any problems with transition or any closures. I think it's best to have a smooth and steady sailing here rather than something chunky and a lot of discord at this site. So I did hear that happen at the Delta, but I don't know who that bargaining agent is, but I have heard from this one and they're a little concerned. So if we can do the same thing at this hotel that was done previously, that would be great. That's the first thing I want to say and make that motion, Speaker. And then the second thing, I just want to reiterate the question that I'd asked.
Yep, hold on.
The question that I'd asked Mr Lewis earlier, based on what councillor Pasternak was asking. And it, having been part of that, actually with our deputy mayor and looking at how we're going to change our process for siting housing rather than have a vote, because we don't vote on which, who can live next door to us. We simply don't do that. And we're trying to rid the planning regime of that very thing, sterile neighborhoods where only certain people can live in them. That I just want to reiterate again, thank you for your answer and making that extremely clear, that we have a different process now, where finding the sites and then we're bringing in the local councillor to assist on being successful. But I also want to emphasize bringing in the local councillor to assist in being successful and remind everybody, when councillor Prutza had an email in his councillor box during COVID and didn't know, I think that every step, I'll just reinforce that again, every step to engage the local councillor, to have them part of the thinking, what's, who are the friends that in this location would be very helpful, which are the church people, who are the organizations? There's a Rotary Club, people that care about other people, that they are front and center. And I don't think that can be done without the local councillor. And I honestly, I hear sometimes from councillors that we should all be voting on siting it. And then I hear sometimes from staff, I don't hear that councillors are as intimately involved in that consultation discussion as they should be. So I'd just like to make those remarks and make that motion, please, Speaker.
Thank you.
Speaker?
Yes?
Hi, I have received the information from staff, but I disagree with it and I'd like to ask you to rule. The concern I have is that because this particular location is in a BIA area and the MCF designation applies, there are areas where we have non-BIA's.
Okay, hold on, councillor Thompson. So are you into, are you going to be moving your motion?
I'm going to be moving my motion, yes.
Okay, so we'll put your motion on the screen and then I'll review it and see if it's out of order.
Thank you, and it's a report request, Speaker.
There it is. Okay. Okay, go ahead, councillor Thompson to speak.
So, Speaker, I'm moving this motion simply because of the fact that in areas, particularly in my area, at 22 Metropolitan, where we do not have a BIA, there are certainly certain associated benefits associated with having a BIA in a. The situation here is that the city, as of the municipal capital facilities, the tax exemption, both the educational and the municipal taxes, are able to provide benefits to the community as a whole. In areas across the city where the city will put in, you know, shelter and support for whether or not it is for refugees or others, there is a benefit to the local community. In areas where there are no BIAs, there are really no benefits. Yes, the city and economic development say, well, we'll consult, but it's not quite the same. I'm simply asking that, as I support what's in front of us, but I think it's in conjunction with what needs to happen in areas where there are no BIAs. We really need to actually, something come to us in form of a report that really talks about and looks at how economic development and of course SSHA can work with the local community to mitigate economic impacts that will create, that will be created as a result of our efforts to provide shelter. In my case, at 22 Metropolitan, the businesses there are indicating that they are down 20 to 30% in terms of their sales. I have been there with Mr Tanner and I've discussed this with Mr Lewis and others and so on. This is an opportunity for us to look at a wider, you know, set of processes to actually help, because we do want to obviously help in order to respond to the need that's acute and that's out there. But I think that to not actually find ways to help in areas where there are no BIAs, I think that's problematic. And I think that this is an opportunity for us to bring a report back in 2023. It doesn't affect what's actually in front of us. But because of the discussion, and Speaker, because I am the Chair of Economic Development, I am acutely aware of the discussions that's been going on. And it makes sense, clearly, to help the local community, but it also makes sense as well to look at how we help the broader communities where there are no BIAs. And this report, this motion is simply a request to bring a report in 2023 as it relates significantly to some of the implications associated with this particular site, clearly not all, but it does have some material benefit citywide.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Speaker.
Okay, so I have reviewed your motion, even though it's not pertaining to the item before us. It is a report request. So my ruling is that your motion would be in order.
Speaker, I'd like to challenge that ruling? Or I'm just going to start moving motions on anything, as long as it's a report request? Anything, I feel like, anything at all?
Okay, so are you gonna?
I've just challenged your rule.
Councillor Perks, are you going to challenge the Chair?
Yes.
Okay, councillor Perks is challenging the Chair. Okay. So we're going to take, we're going to take a recorded vote to uphold the Chair or not?
Councillor Robinson, how do you vote?
Against.
Councillor Cole, how do you vote, sir?
I vote to uphold the Chair.
Councillor Thompson, how do you vote, sir?
In support of the Chair's decision.
Councillor Grimes, how do you vote, sir?
I'm firm enough to uphold the Chair.
And lastly, councillor Prutza? Are you connected, councillor Prutza, to the meeting? Are you connected, Counselor Prutza, to the meeting? Madam Speaker, I don't see Counselor Prutza connected, so-- the vote to uphold the chair carries, the vote is 14 to 8.
Can put the motions on the screen. Oh, Counselor Carroll, you wanted to speak, sorry. Counselor Carroll?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I, I would like to speak. I hadn't intended to speak on this, but I, I sincerely hope that people will not be supporting Counselor Thompson's motion. As a member of Economic Development Committee, you know, I perhaps should be supporting whatever the Chair says, but right now, what we have before us is an item that is very site-specific. It is about a lot of work that has been done on one particular site and to get it open and get it started in what is really, as a result of all the work that's been done up to this point, a very exciting model that, that will hopefully not disadvantage any business nearby. Hopefully will create the kind of family atmosphere and the successful, you know, pathway to, to being welcomed in this city portal that we are trying to make out of Three Park Home. And, and that's a good news story. But I, I ask that, that my colleagues try to remember how many things, how very many things we have asked staff to report back on in Q1 2023 and Q2 2023. The motion represents a very difficult policy dilemma, and a major one at that, that we're asking staff to take on before we've had any standing committee discussion on it. The idea that we should somehow have either shelter staff or economic development staff be able to quantify for us and tell us what is the economic impact of a shelter? Can we put a dollar value on it? Should we start shelling out for that? Or are we simply meant to run, run a city, run a shelter program, run a refugee program that essentially we're running on behalf of a federal government? And, and, and then we're supposed to figure out a way to mitigate the financial impact of that? That is not work that I think is fair to ask of the city, of the city staff, the public service right now, without our own policy discussion about it, without the bigger discussion, given the economic uncertainty, given all the things happening to the climate, to the economy, the number of refugee waves that we may see in the next few years? We need to have a big conversation. If we're going to start to take on more and more of the types of dollars and cents impacts of that using property tax, I, I don't think we want to ask for that report right now. I think what is a more important conversation for the public service to be having is the conversation we should be having with the federal government about the fact that there is actually a limit to the impacts of it and what we can do about that with city revenues. And so I, I won't be supporting my, my, my learned and respected colleague. It pains me not to vote for his motion, but I won't be. And I have to say, I hope that the rest of my colleagues don't vote for it at this time either. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Mayor Torrey to speak.
Well, Speaker, thank you. I, I wasn't planning to address this part of it, but of course I didn't know about Counselor Thompson's, Deputy Mayor Thompson's motion. And I'll, I'll take a slightly different perspective respectfully through you, Speaker, than Counselor Carroll. I mean, I think that, you know, if it is something that is a major policy dilemma, and I think she's correct in that regard, through you, Speaker, that that's precisely the kind of work that we might ask the staff to do while we're having this hiatus for the elections, so that when we come to discuss this, you know, we're better positioned with some of the background and information and research that our staff, only our staff, could do on providing us with various perspectives on this. And I think to Counselor Perks' point, through you, Speaker, I, I believe this is a point that arises out of this specific situation. That's why I voted to uphold the chair, because I think that one of the things I'm very conscious of, and I'm spending my time, I, I mentioned that I was at the Delta Hotel on Friday. I've been to the other, a number of these other hotels. I was on the phone this morning with respect to another hotel that we purchased under the Rapid Housing Program, trying to, you know, make sure that the community stays together on this, because I'm very anxious for us to continue to do the very excellent job that we're doing in trying to look after people and in many cases try to provide housing for them. But I think, you know, that the kind of point that Counselor Thompson raises, Deputy Mayor Thompson, if it can be dealt with now in terms of some research to position us better to have a discussion early on, this is going to, I think, you know, to some extent, just reduce one more reason why people get up against these things. You know, whether it's in the business community or the neighborhoods and so on, and I've certainly found it to be my job for the last number of months, whether it's on modular housing, supportive housing, hotels, that, you know, I'm trying to bring the community together and eliminate one by one, you know, the reasons why people find themselves sometimes concerned about these things and promote to them the community building and city building benefits of having these things and having us look after and support each other. So I hadn't planned to make my remarks on that, but I will just, in saying that, encourage people to vote for Counselor, Deputy Mayor Thompson's motion. I think the only real reason given against it, I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, is that the staff have other things to do at their time, and I certainly agree they're very busy. But I think now is a very good time, before we do come back with a new council, to have a look at those implications, because I think it's proper we should know. I, I wanted to speak on the issue in an even broader sense. I do thank the staff very much, Mr. Lewis, Ms. Felicia, and others, for the work they've done getting this to where it is today and so that we can move forward with it. The communications, you know, while I completely concur with what Counselor Fletcher was talking about through you, Speaker, with respect to the process we put in place as to how sites are selected and so on, at the same time, there is a degree of consultation that should take place, and it should take place in a kind of an orderly, business-like manner. And, and I think that, let's put it this way, I think the communications on this one were a bit bumpy at the beginning, including with the councillor. And I think we took the extra time, which was a good thing to do, a month. And that cost us a month in terms of getting a supplier, or what do we call it, a provider in place. But nonetheless, I think we're in a better place today. I wanted to just, so, and I think we will address quite well. I, I'm very happy, when I've been out to these hotels, that, at the number of employees in those hotels. And I know that Counselor Fletcher was referring to making sure that this one falls into the same pattern. But when I was at the Delta, I specifically asked, because I was concerned, that it be hotel employees that were, you know, continuing to have their jobs, providing for the people who were, who were sheltering at the Delta Hotel. And I was told that we were doing that as a matter of course, and Mr. Lewis mentioned that as well. I wanted to just address myself to this, to the refugee situation. I mean, I am a strong supporter. This city has a proud tradition, and I want to continue as mayor in keeping up that proud tradition of welcoming refugees who seek shelter from unbelievable persecution and, and circumstances we can hardly imagine here. But the situation is such that last week I have communicated, and it isn't a financial thing, because the government has, albeit sometimes a bit, in a bit of a tardy fashion, supported us financially, and they, they made whole our numbers for 2021 just recently, and I'm gratified by that. And we've discussed with them, obviously, 2022. What I am concerned about is this trend line that is heading back in with the borders reopened and with people making refugee claims, where they find their way to Toronto in astounding numbers. And I think they find their way to Toronto where then the expectation becomes not so much about the financing of how we look after them, but rather that we're just running out of an ability to easily find places to do it. And I just want to put on the record here that I've had discussions that have been ongoing for some time now with the Government of Canada about them establishing some sort of a, a transition center where what they can do, and we've demonstrated here to the Government of Canada, and the Minister of Immigration knows this, and he's a very, very collegial and collaborative person, that we got all of the municipalities, under Toronto's leadership and the city manager and others, Paul Johnson, to work together, 11 municipalities, to say, we will work together to make sure that refugees, in that case coming from Ukraine, can get to the right place where the right supports are available at the right time for them, so that you don't just assume all of them should show up in Toronto. We said we would take that on together. And I think that in the same spirit, the federal government has to look at some kind of a, I'll call it a transition center, where people, when they're coming across the border, and often coming to be candid, down the road from Montreal where they cross, that they can be, go to this place, this transition center, and then be perhaps directed to the place where they're best able to be accepted. And the idea is a positive idea, to have them accepted, but to have them accepted in a Hamilton or a, or a Peel or a York, where they may have better provision to do that than we have in Toronto, where we're really at the stage now where we're expressing the same, we're experiencing the same stresses and strains we did two or three years ago, where I think upwards now of about 30% of our entire shelter population is refugees. They do find housing faster. We're having some success with that. But nonetheless, we just can't keep on with the trend line that is taking place. And this hotel, the Novotel up there on Park Home will help. But I do want to just draw to the attention, and I've always put it in the context, and I apologize for the time, I always put it in the context of how supportive Toronto is as a city, how supportive I am as mayor and this council, of our responsibilities, if I can call it that, with respect to refugees. However, we need them to work with us, so that we're not just sort of, they're not just assuming, as I think sometimes is the case, that we can just accept untold numbers. And it's not about money. They've been keeping us relatively whole. It's about our capacity to deal with it. So I just wanted to make sure I put that on the record today, Speaker. Thank you for your indulgence.
Thank you. Counselor Perks to speak.
Thank you, Speaker. I, I do need to get up to speak against Counselor Thompson's motion. My Toronto, the Toronto that, that I love and feel part of, is a Toronto that rallies around refugees. There have been moments of refugee crisis recently in the city of Toronto, and the businesses that I admire are those that stepped up and didn't ask for a handout, but offered to help. They contributed financially, they provided material support, they launched fundraising campaigns. They said, if you are a refugee, if you are fleeing violence, if you are in fear of your life and you come here, you're welcome and we support you. Counselor Thompson's motion takes us in exactly the opposite direction and somehow suggests that if a refugee, a refugee is living next to where you operate your business, you require compensation? It's exactly the opposite of the Toronto that I admire and feel part of. It's exactly the opposite direction that we should be going in. And further, I want to remind members of council, we have been warned over and over again by the mayor and the public service that we are in lean times. I got a call from a, an agency that provides support to people who are marginally housed just last week, saying that the city is unable to provide the same amount of financial support to some of those programs that help keep people from becoming homeless. Things like trusteeship programs or food, food supports. We're unable to provide the supports to the people who really need it, because even though we've had some good work with the federal government, provincial government and federal governments have not made us whole for all of the COVID costs. We're being told that our capital program and the simple pothole filling is going to have to slow down because we're out of money. And somehow, suddenly, the priority is to provide compensations to, to businesses? Because a human being lives next to them? What kind of a city are we if we say that you're, you're eligible for money because of some stigmatized group living next to you? It's not the city I want to be part of. It's the wrong message. It's the wrong signal. And it helps to build an idea of what Toronto is that is anathema to the Toronto I feel part of.
Thank you. We have one more--
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Counselor Pasternak to speak.
Yes, no, thank you very much. I, I really wish Counselor Perks should read the report before getting up and speaking, because I don't think he understands what's before us. I'm going to be supporting Counselor Thompson's motion, because I think it's important to realize that we're not, we're losing a hotel in the heart of North York, which generates millions of dollars of business to our local economy. And Counselor Perks may not know this, but many of the small business owners in the catchment area are newcomers, people who came to this country with a dream of setting up a business. And I also wonder where he was during the pandemic, where we softened the blow of the economy and the pandemic by helping out businesses, by helping out businesses with, with city services and city supports and consulting supports, as well as the other level of governments. We have a long tradition in this country to assist business, both large and small, in orders that they succeed in the local communities. And we've done it through a number of different tools, whether it be direct grants, whether it be tax breaks, whether it be various incentives, whether it be government consulting. We have always helped businesses. And in no way do I see, in reading Counselor Thompson's motion, is this in any way passing judgment on, on the people who will be staying at this, this hotel. You know, it's important to realize that we're losing hotels in this city left and right. I had a Holiday Inn torn down just to the west of the ward I represented, East and Counselor Cole's ward. And that will take away millions of dollars of local economic activity that used to come from that hotel from tourists staying there. And we have always supported businesses, many run by newcomers and immigrants. So I will be supporting this, and all it does is asking city staff to review what they've already done and, and programs that are basically in place and institutionalized through the pandemic and through other, other periods of disruption. So I urge you to support it, because many of these businesses are run by newcomers, they're run by immigrants, and we've got to keep our retail and our service industries vibrant. We've got to make, they're not food deserts, and we've got to make sure that Toronto continues to prosper and that the business community knows its government stands beside it. And on top of that, this is in no way passing judgments on the newcomers who we welcome and embrace here, who have made Toronto great. I mean, that is just a slur. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, I'm, members, as you know, we have a second meeting scheduled for 1:30. Under the council procedures, we are required to start that meeting by 2:00 p.m. Please allow me to run through the following procedure steps to ensure our meetings are conducted properly. Firstly, Meeting 48 of City Councils now recess briefly to permit me to call Meeting 49 to order. Okay, so we're recessed. On favor? Well, we don't have to take a vote? Okay. I will now call Meeting 49 of City Council to order. As we have not yet completed Meeting 48, I am recessing Meeting 49 until the completion of Meeting 48. Okay? Meeting 48 of City Councils now resumed. Okay. We're back to, we're back to 48. Okay, if we can go back on the speakers list, I believe I seen Deputy Mayor Minin Wong on the screen to speak.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I won't take long. I'm not supporting these reports. I think this idea to put the shelter in the heart of North York and the Novotel is wrong. I think the decision to do it was built on a shaky foundation where there was no meaningful and authentic consultation to take this decision. There's no consultation with the community. This is a problem we have at the city, where we're putting these facilities in, and we're not asking the public. Sure, it's hard, but that's our job. And so I think that there are going to be problems, because we didn't ask people, we didn't listen to them. And it's not just, it can't be an inauthentic consultation where we just tell them after the fact. To me, that's nonsense. That's disingenuous. It's insincere, and it's wrong. I'm not against, you can use whatever phrase you want, and Counselor Pasternak used newcomer. I'm not against newcomers. I'm not against refugees. I am against illegal immigrants, and those are people that have lost their status and who are staying and hiding in this country illegally. I am against those people, as I think the majority of Torontonians are. This isn't about that. This is about, we are now establishing this, what, what was during the pandemic as an emergency, we're, it's being established as a status quo. And that status quo is unacceptable to me. I think it's unacceptable to the people in that community, and I think it needs to change. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay, let's put the motions on the screen. Motion 1A by Counselor Fillion. On favor. Posed if any, carried. Next motion. By Counselor Fillion. On favor. Show of hands. Posed if any, carried. Next motion.
Recorded vote, please, Madam Speaker.
Yes, on, motion by Counselor Thompson, recorded vote, I'm sorry, motion by Counselor Fletcher. Counselor Fletcher, did you ask for a recorded vote? Who asked for a recorded vote? Oh, okay, motion by Counselor Fletcher on favor. Show of hands-- Okay, motion by Counselor Fletcher, on favor, show of hands, carried. Next motion. Motion by Counselor Thompson, recorded vote.
I'm now going to call on members who have not received the vote electronically to state their votes. Counselor Fletcher, please.
In favor.
Thank you. Counselor Thompson, please.
Favor.
Thank you. Counselor Grimes.
In favor.
Counselor Carroll, are you voting electronically? Oh, it's closed, so we'll now need your vote verbally, please.
Sorry, I was waiting for it to come up. Opposed.
Counselor Perutzis, please.
In favor.
Counselor Perutzis, in favor, thank you. Counselor Cole?
Opposed.
And Counselor Robinson, please.
Opposed.
Thank you. The motion carries, the vote is fourteen to nine.
Item is amended, on favor, show of hands, opposed, if any, carried. Our next item is CC 48.2, 1117 Queen Street. Counselor Bylaw, do you have questions to staff?
Yes, I do, Madam Speaker.
Okay, Counselor Bylaw, questions?
Madam Chair, too, I believe heritage staff. This building was owned by the federal government, correct?
Correct, through the Chair.
Is the city of Toronto allowed to designate heritage, to have heritage designations on federally-owned buildings?
We are able to list properties that are provincially or federally-owned, but we are not able to designate them.
So is that why we are now in this process? Because this building was recently sold, and that's why you're actually now proceeding with the designation?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, speakers, Counselor Bylaw.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just want to thank staff and the community for all the work and advocacy that has been done on this building. This is an old Canada Post building. We had advocated hard to the federal government to have this building as a community hub, community arts hub, given all the development that happened in this area. From the Toronto Arts Council to our local MP, MPP, myself, we had advocated, we had residents as well, forming a group to see if we could have, not a straight-up sale of the building, that didn't happen. But in any case, this is a building that had been already identified through the Queen Street West Heritage Study as a potential heritage property. It was not designated because it was federally owned, and as you heard by the answers given here today, the city is not able to designate those buildings. The building was recently sold, so most likely we'll see a development application in the near future. We're hoping that we can work with a developer to still have some community facility in there, but definitely we'll want to protect it as a heritage building, and so I ask for your support for this designation. Thank you.
Thank you. On the item, on favor, show of hands, opposed, if any, carried. Okay, that's it for Meeting 48. So, members, before I ask for a motion to enact the general bills, may I have a motion regarding the consideration of submissions on zoning by law and official plan amendments? Counselor Bylaw, would you like to move that?
Certainly. The committee and council consider submission in making a decision on zoning by law and official plan amendments.
On favor, show of hands, opposed, if any, carried. May I have a motion to introduce the general bills? Moved by Counsel McKelvey. You have to read it.
That leave be granted to introduce Bills 1086 to 1106.
Shall leave be granted to introduce these bills? On the, on favor, opposed, if any, carried. Shall these bills be passed and declared as a bylaw? All those in favor, opposed, if any, carried. May I have a motion to introduce a confirming bill? Counselor Mantas? Turn your mic on, please. No, you have to, yeah.
That leave be granted to introduce a bill to confirm to the point of the introduction of this motion, the proceedings of City Council Meeting 48 on August 15, 2022.
Shall leave be granted to introduce this bill? All those in favor, show of hands, opposed, if any, carried. Shall this bill be passed and declared as a bylaw? All those in favor, show of hands, opposed, if any, carried. Thank you. Okay, this meeting, Meeting 48, is now adjourned. Thank you.